Jason, all the buildings sold?
Yep.
Okay, so I had somebody ask today, I said, I think they're all tendered.
They should still reach out just in case one of the two.
Okay.
You know, because Glenn Cox, the one he has, may not, he may never do it. That's one of the big back ones, so you know, somebody that's interested, they should, they should reach out to Granite Town Farms. Let's see.
Okay.
All right. I will now call the meeting to order here, here at McAdavis Place, St. George. And good evening and welcome, everybody, to the April 2024 Regular Council Meeting for Eastern Charlotte Council. This is our sixteenth official council meeting for Eastern Charlotte. That means we have twenty-five more to go until the end of this council's term. I welcome all those that are attending here tonight and those that are watching us on television or their cell phones or computers. And I wish to welcome and thank CHCO for being here tonight. Mr. Kohler, Chris, for coming all the way from St. Andrews, I appreciate it, thank you. And we have Florence Mitchell in the back, who's actually doing all the switching tonight, so you'll be able to watch this in the future. And attendants tonight, we have Chris McKinnon, our Assistant Clerk, and of course, Jason Gedet, our CEO. Two councillors are not here tonight, Daryl is quite sick and Adam had a previous engagement, so he couldn't be here tonight. What I'm going to do at this point, I'm going to ask for a motion to adopt the agenda for tonight, so I need a motion for that tonight. Councillor Lee, give me that motion. And I need a second for that, and Councillor Macquarie. Any questions or comments on the, for the agenda tonight? All those in favor of the agenda signify by saying aye. Contrary, and that's passed unanimously. That brings us to number three, which is Conflict of Interest. Anybody has any conflict of interest, may do so now, make, make that disclosure. If not, we move along to adoption of the minutes of previous council meetings. We have a few here tonight, four A. Four A is March the twentieth, twenty twenty-four. I need a motion to approve the minutes for the meeting of March the twentieth. Councillor Dederaacus, thank you. I need a second for that, would be Deputy Mayor, thank you. Question or comment on that? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Contrary, and that's passed unanimously. That, that brings us to four B, which is the April the second meeting of council. I need a motion to approve the April second, twenty twenty-four meeting of council. Councillor Lee, seconded by Councillor Thompson, thank you. Question or comment on this motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Contrary, and that's passed unanimously. Four C, which is April the ninth, we had a meeting at night, and I need a, a motion to adopt the minutes of the April ninth meeting of council. Councillor McKay? Seconded by Councillor Town Thompson, thank you. Question or comment on this motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Contrary, and that's passed unanimously. Four D is April the ninth, another meeting of council. I'm looking for a motion to, to approve the minutes of the April ninth meeting. Councillor Thompson, seconded by Councillor Lee. Question or comment on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Contrary, and that's passed unanimously. I believe I got them all. Yep. Business arising out of the minutes, there are none tonight. Delegations, we did have one delegation, but they, they put it off until next month, so we're going to have the ECW coming in next month. Tonight, we have Department Reports at seven A, the General Government Report, and I'm going to call on our C- CEO, Jason Gedet.
Thank you, your worship. The EMO activated to level one for March thirtieth through April the second. We are working with the Province Provincial EMO to host a community engagement event on emergency events in our area, such as flooding and wildfires. Also, Eastern Charlotte EMO plan is scheduled to be brought to council for the May meeting. Draft plans should go out soon. Housing and Development, discussions with the Province on Exit Fifty-Six, preliminary study, costing out drainage and fill work for Exit Fifty-Two, the municipal lot. RFPs on Black Harbor properties for housing, those should be wrapped up by the end of this month. And worked, worked a couple developers on those. Still awaiting some documentation for Brunswick Street, St. George Complex, so that gets, that'll get moving. Discussions with new owners of the golf course now renamed the Hollows Golf Course as well. Parks and Recreation, repairs coming to the dugouts for the Veterans Field here in St. George, ordering of flowers and meeting with the gardening volunteers within St. George. New picnic tables coming as part of the arrangement with the carpentry class with the Funny High School. Employees and personnel, preparations for the union negotiations are underway, management meetings with public work teams. Water, Black Harbor monitoring equipment has been ordered, scheduled for spring flushing, which is happening this week in Black Harbor, and cleaning of the French Village Water Reservoir. Continuing to have discussions and targets with the private entity, which owns the water source, on future improvements and long-term plans. Water for St. George, working with the contractor, as well as industry on cleaning plan for St. George Water Tower. Also reviewing possibility of changing up the logo on the water tower. Fire, finalizing the delivery of the new fire truck with metal fab. We'll begin planning and building it for our next fire truck as soon as delivery happens. Roads, sidewalk work in Black Harbor, part of the gas tax plan for former village of Black Harbor. Spring pothole repairs in both village and town. Pricing received for high school crosswalk begin at Funny High School. And scheduling street sweeping and crosswalk and road lining for the season as well. Discussions with estate of apartment building on Main Street on changing the mural on Main Street. Two memorial benches slated for installation for St. George, also a memorial tree is being looked at as well. And that's the General Government Report.
Great, thank you, Jason. Any questions or comments for that from, from council tonight? Councillor Dederaacus, you're first.
Yeah, it's for the reviewing, reviewing possibility of logo changeout for the water tower. And, you know, for me, the fundamental idea of amalgamation is to work together, but each community, you know, somewhat maintains their identity. The former town of St. George did pay for that logo. We know of people that actually live in St. George, infrastructure is crumbling, so I'm just wondering, how pressing is it to spend tax dollars on, on changing this logo?
We're, we're not even to the point of getting a quotation, so once we receive the quotation, we'll come back to council for review, so. It hasn't been pressing because, one, we, we, under the belief that it could be changed, it was sort of embedded in glass, but it's part of the reservation, the reservoir cleaning, was told to us by the contractor that it could be, so. We're just getting to costing at this point to see what that would be, so it may not even, may not even be within any type of ballpark.
Any other questions or comments? If not, we're going to move on to the reports of the Southwest New Brunswick Service Commission. I'm going to go to Jason, I think, I don't think either one of the representatives are here tonight.
Yep, I don't see, okay. So this is the Building and Planning and Enforcement Report. We did get a, we did get a regret from Alex Henderson, Planning Director, they couldn't be here. A super, subdivision of building, building three lots with a private access off of Spur Number Two Road, as well as a variance for forty-meter lot frontage versus fifty-four meter, was approved at the March PRC meeting. Approved PRC, February meeting minutes were attached in the report. Service Commission Planning is advising council to consider adopting the bylaw, the building bylaw for all of Eastern Charlotte. Draft bylaw and separate report is attached, I believe that's on agenda for first reading tonight. Continue to work on a proposed new subdivision bylaw draft for Eastern Charlotte, and Service Commission planners would be able, available to assist Eastern Charlotte with making any future applications for federal housing grants. Development update, seventeen building demolitions or development permits issued to date. Construction value at one point one nine million. And three variances or terms of condition approved issued for the year to date. Five tentative subdivision applications approved with ten new building lots created year to date. Six rezoning confirmation letters issued, one exemption document approved to be registered in the land registry, and three net new dwelling permits issued to date, no change in reporting period. As far as enforcement, forty-four open enforcement files are being worked on that have been identified under the Dangerous Unslightly Premises Bylaw or the Community Planning Act. Twenty-seven files have been closed to date as well for compliance, and that was submitted by Alex Henderson.
Great, thank you very much. Any questions or comments? We'll move on to the fire report, and I'll call on Councillor Thompson for this tonight.
The fire report for March twenty twenty-four, with a total of twenty-nine calls. We'd like to thank the members for their continued training. Just to note that grass fires in Eastern Charlotte require a written burn plan and pre-inspection by the forestry or the fire chief. Thank you.
Yep, any questions or comments on the fire report? That brings us to the Public Works Report, and I'll call on Councillor Macquarie tonight.
From Black Harbor, they've had complaints about turbidity, and they're doing the monitoring and that, and they will be on the normal test if required. Manholes and sewer lines were cleaned, street sweeping has started. Potholes are being filled as needed. New street signs are being installed as they receive them. Public Works has updated their safety courses. St. George. Modifications have been made to the walking trail gates to try and keep them from being pushed open so easily by unwanted vehicles trespassing. They assessed the ATV club and putting up the new signage to direct the ATV traffic through town. Sweeper's been out. And that's it, on a different note. The RCAF hundred-year banners are here, and they will be put up either later this week or early next week.
Great, thank you, Councillor Macquarie. Any questions or comments on that report? Just, I mean, the, the only thing I would want to add is a couple items. Black Harbor, the, anybody listening in Black Harbor, they're working on the, the playground area when you, on the, off the main street in Black Harbor, they're working to move that down towards the arena. So the, the Public Works crew are working away at that. And in St. George, I saw this tonight, people were asking about garbage cans. There's been a few cans put out so far in the season, but as the weather gets better, they'll have the rest of them out. So anybody concerned about that, they are, the guys are working hard on that, so. We have, we have two good foremen, we have Ron Groom and Ricky Levitt, and they, they do an exceptionally great job in, in the two areas. That brings us to the Parks and Recreation Report, and tonight I'm going to call on our Deputy Mayor to give this report.
Hi, thanks. The arena maintenance is on schedule and all daily logs are up to date and done on time. General meetings, maintenance and cleaning at the arena is done daily. Zamboni checks and maintenance have been done. Upgrades to lighting at the arena are complete. They're waiting on quotes for a heat pump for the arena lobby and office and dressing room area. Window has been approved to replace the doors in the YMCA entrance. March was our final month for rentals at the arena, and it was a busy week with multiple rentals and ice time was well-used. March sixteenth was the Lake Utopia, Lake Utopia Paper hosted the Battle of the Mills Charity Hockey Game. It was a great event, raising money for a good cause. Arena shutdown was March eighteenth. And Eastern Charlotte will be hosting a bike safety rodeo in partnership with the RCMP and Eastern Charlotte Fire Department on May first at the arena. And plans are underway to do repairs to all the sports fields and other facilities as needed.
Great, thank the Deputy Mayor for that. Questions or comments on that report? Okay, that brings us to the next one, which is, I believe, committee reports. I just had one committee report, it was sent by Councillor Hat, he knew he couldn't be here tonight. Good evening, unfortunately, unfortunately, I was unable to attend tonight's meeting in person, but I would like to, to note on a few advance coming right up. Earth, Earth Day is this Monday, April the twenty-second. With that, Friday, April the nineteenth, Eastern Charlotte has partnered with Eastern Charlotte Waterways, YMCA, and the Black Harbor School, meeting at the old Fresh Mart Building at twelve thirty PM for a community cleanup. On Saturday, April the twentieth, Eastern Charlotte has ten locations to choose from. Adventure Lane and Trail, Brookside Lane and Carlton Street Exit, Levitt's Head Road, Route seven seventy-two, Back Bay Fire Station to the corner, Back Bay Loop, Greens Point Road, Chubbs Corner to the Ferry Landing, Masquerine Road, St. George to Latite, McKay Loop Road, starting at, at Good Walk and, and the Beach Road, and Beaver Harbor. Gather at your location of choice at nine AM, and we will provide the garbage bags and the gloves. Our annual bicycle safety rodeo is Wednesday, the May first, at six PM at the Patrick Connors Recreational Complex. Along with your bike, you must have a helmet to, to participate. Also bring along your favorite stuffy for a checkup at the Teddy Bear Clinic. You gonna bring your stuffy, our Deputy Mayor? Sure, okay. Saturday, May fourth, from nine AM to one PM, there will be a Mother's Day Market at the McAdavis Community Center. And the Eastern Charlotte, Eastern Charlotte Wide Yard Sale, yeah, wide yard sale is scheduled for Saturday, June the first. To register your address, to be on the map, visit the Parks and Recreation, Recreational Facebook page, or call the municipal office before May seventeenth to give the staff time to prepare and post the map a couple weeks in advance. And that's from Councillor Adam Hat tonight. If there's no questions or comments on that, we'll move to the financial statement tonight. Look for a motion to accept the financial report for March twenty twenty-four. Councillor Lee, thank you, thank you. Seconded by Councillor Macquarie. Question or comment on the motion? All those in favor of accepting the financial report for March twenty twenty-four signify by saying aye. Contrary, and that's passed unanimously. That brings us to old business, we do have some old business tonight, too, we have to get finished. Tonight, we have third and final reading, and this by title only. To accept the third and final reading by title only, a bylaw number EC-dash-eleven, which will be the Peddler's Bylaw. This has been out for a couple months now. What I need at this point, I need a motion to accept the third and final read. Councillor Thompson, thank you. Second for that would be Councillor Lee, thank you. Question or comment for the final, for the final reading? Councillor Dederaacus.
Just so people understand. This is for, once this passes, you know, people will pay to have a permit to pedal, and it's valid for any location in Eastern Charlotte?
Yes, I mean, it would be public lands, so if there's an arrangement that a peddler has made with a private business or a private homeowner, that'd be something different.
Okay, any other questions or comments on the motion? If not, all those in favor of a third and final reading by title only of bylaw number EC-dash-eleven, the Peddler's Bylaw, signify by saying aye. Contrary, that's passed unanimously. I declare that the third and final reading, bylaw number EC-dash-eleven, Peddler's Bylaw. Tonight, we have nine B, which is the finance, from the Finance Committee, the sponsorship, New Brunswick Darts Association. I'll go to Councillor Lee for this, if you'd like. Yep, absolutely.
Sorry. In Saint-Hansin, Quebec.
Okay, you're making a motion, you make a donation of two hundred dollars, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, I need a second for that motion. Going once, twice, okay, we have no second for that. Anything else you'd like to make it, would you like to make a, a different motion?
Well, yeah, I think I should, we should, we've, we talked about this, and it's not that we wouldn't like to give the money to, to the Darts Association, but there's been a lot of, you know, letters in for donations this year for a number of things, and we're, we're finding we're in a little bit of a money crunch. We can't donate to everybody for everything. And unfortunately, we're trying to keep the money going to places like the Food Bank and, you know, maybe education and things like that, but to assist for sporting events this year is just a little tight for us, and that's the only reason. We all agreed to that, so, maybe next year, so, anyway, I just think it's important that we tell you why.
Okay, what I would ask council maybe is to entertain having a motion to send a letter to the New Brunswick Darts Association to explain to them that you're unable to do that, so I need a motion for that.
I, I move that we send a letter to them and, and explain why.
Great, we have a motion from Councillor Lee. I need a second for that, Councillor Dederaacus. Question or comment on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And that's passed unanimously, thank you. That brings us to number ten, new business tonight. This is a purchase of a property located at Twenty Industrial Drive in Black Harbor. And may I go to the CEO, maybe you wanted to explain the, the pit number? The pit number is one five two zero one nine four zero, and I'm pretty sure that most people don't, don't know what that is, so. Maybe you can just give it a quick explanation.
Thank you, your worship. So this is, this is a property that's located at Twenty Industrial Drive. Council previously had, had made the, the motion to approach the Capitol Boring Board for a purchase of this property, which came back successful, so. This motion would be to move ahead with the actual purchase. So the Industrial Drive property, formerly, I think it was a real shrimp building, so that would be used for the purpose of relocating Public Works to, to that location. And then the current Public Works location would be eventually phased out, I think there's some housing options that are, are adjacent to that property, and I think long-term housing is, is a big need. So this would, this would certainly meet the, the needs of Black Harbor Public Works. Gives a large laydown area, it's away from residential homes, and I think also within the burrowing, we had some C-cans coming in for storage. This would also, this building with the renovations that we would do, would allow for vehicles to be put inside and, and worked on as well, so. So we'd be looking for a motion of a council to, to move ahead with the purchase of that property.
Great, so what I am looking for at this point, council has a motion to purchase the property located at Twenty Industrial Drive, Black Harbor, pit number one five two zero one nine four zero. I need a motion to that effect. Okay, I got two hands, I'm going to go to Councillor Macquarie first, if you want to give that motion, please.
I move that council purchased the property located in Twenty Industrial Drive, Black Harbor.
Great, thank you, Councillor Macquarie, and Councillor Lee, you're second in that? Question or comment on the motion? Councillor Dederaacus.
Is this going to be shared, is the debt going to be shared amongst all of Eastern Charlotte or just Black Harbor?
So Public Works is, individual Public Works, St. George and Black Harbor are expensed to just those subunits.
So St. George would be included in?
No, 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 so each individual Public Works crew, like St. George, is to St. George, the former municipality. And Black Harbor is the former municipality as well.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Contrary, and that's passed unanimously. Ten B is the authorization for short-term borrowing for the purchase of Twenty Industrial Drive, so we've already agreed to buy it. Now what we have to do is make a motion to have the short-term, short-term borrowing. Do you want to speak on that, Jason?
Yes, thank you, your worship, so we would have to pay the, the landowner, so in order to, to pay them, we would do short-term borrowing through, through a financial institution, Bank of Nova Scotia, which is the, the, the bank for the municipality. And that would get us over to the point where we, we then would take the ministerial order and then convert that into a debenture for long-term burrowing. So it's just a short period of time, we've already budgeted some funds within short-term burrowing expenses, so. So that's what that would do, and eventually that would come back to, to council, likely in May, to, to actually, actually issue the debenture act on the ministerial order for borrowing.
Great, so what I need is a motion on this tonight, the, the suggested motion is before you, so I need one councillor to give that motion tonight. Councillor McKay, you go ahead.
Whereas the municipality of Eastern Charlotte has received Ministerial Order twenty-four dash zero zero two one, authorizing Eastern Charlotte to obtain the, for capital expenses by way of a loan or by the issue and sale of debentures to the New Brunswick Municipal Finance Corporation, amounts not exceeding twenty thousand for transportation services, five years, two hundred and ten thousand for transportation services, maximum term twenty years. Whereas council has approved the purchase of the property located at Twenty Industrial Drive, Black Harbor, pit number one five two zero one nine four zero. Be it resolved that the clerk and/or treasurer be authorized on behalf of Eastern Charlotte to borrow for temporary purposes pending the issue and sale of debentures, the principal sum of three, two hundred and thirty thousand from a chartered bank trust company, credit union, or the New Brunswick Municipal Finance Corporation at an, at an interest rate not exceeding the chartered bank's prime rate, which borrowing may be evidenced by securities having the term to mature, to maturity of less than one year.
Thank you, Councillor McKay, I appreciate that, that was a long one. I need a second for that, good, Deputy Mayor, thank you very much. Question or comment on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Contrary, and that's passed unanimously. That brings us to bylaw number EC-dash-twelve, I think we did that one, which is the building bylaws. Tonight would be the first reading by title only. And what I'll do, I'll go to Jason first on this, just to give a quick talk about this.
Yep, thank you, your worship, so this is a bylaw brought forward, recommendation by the Service Commission to, to bring the, all the building bylaws that are, were existing with the former municipalities and, and Eastern Charlotte as a whole. So this is bylaw number EC-dash-one-two, a bylaw respecting building and construction for Eastern Charlotte. And, you know, we're looking for a first reading on that.
Great, so EC-dash-twelve is the building bylaw. As, as most people know, we're a new entity now, so every, every one of these is numbered, so this is actually our twelfth bylaw. So I need a motion from council to accept the first reading by title only of bylaw number dash EC-dash-twelve, the building bylaw. Councillor Lee?
I move that council accept the first reading by title only of bylaw number EC-dash-twelve, building bylaw.
Thank you, Councillor Lee. Second for that would be Councillor Macquarie, thank you. Question or comment on the motion? Councillor Dederaacus, you're first.
Yeah, I don't know if council had a chance to actually review this, but, you know, we are in a housing crisis, and I just feel, not feel, it says it in the text, this is actually going to make building houses more expensive, right? So when we talk about, say, like, a modest bungalow or a mini-home, you know, which is, let's say roughly around three hundred thousand dollars, this is going to be about, you know, nine to ten thousand dollars in, in permit fees. And I think that's not acceptable, yeah, that's my comment on that.
I just, I want to remind council on this tonight, just because you're doing a first reading does not make it law. All this does tonight, it just puts it out into the public domain. So this gives the oppo, by doing a first reading tonight, it gives the opportunity for the, for the public to be able to read this bylaw. And I think somewhere tonight, I believe you'd be setting a night, yes, you'd be setting a public hearing later on. So all this, all this does on your, it doesn't hold you down to anything, all it does is just puts it out to the public and gives the public a chance to, to have their say on it. That's all, all really a first reading does on this. Councillor Dederaacus, you, oh, I thought you were reaching, I thought you were reaching for your mic, so, no. If not, although, okay, we have a motion on the floor. Did I get a motion for that? Yes, I did, yep. We have a motion on the floor. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Contrary? It's Councillor Dederaacus and Councillor Thompson? So that is, yeah, that, that motion is carried. Okay, now, there is a second reading, you have an option for a second reading tonight, that does not mean you have to do a second reading tonight. If council, but I'll, I'll leave it out there for council, I'm not going to tell council what to do, but you have that option. You can re, you can wait for another month or so for a second reading. If nobody wants to do a second reading of that, we can wait on that. Now, what council should be doing is, is ten C-one-one-one, which is to schedule a public hearing. This is something in council, since you've already done your first reading, you should be setting a public meetings, it gives the opportunity for the public to be able to come and, and speak on it. So we have a motion there for the possibility of May the eighth, having a, a public hearing for that. Would somebody like to make that motion? Councillor Thompson? Second, seconded by?
So with the second reading, we, it's not by title only, it will be by entirety, so. Within that second reading, that does bring out the full bylaw in the draft state, as its current state, so that then can be publicly reviewed. Right now, we have a title only by a bylaw, so we would need a, a second reading to, to bring the title, to bring the full bylaw to the draft state. And again, you know, until a third and enacted reading, this is not a law.
So the, so the law is we have to do, do a second reading before we have a public meetings, okay? So, okay, what I have to do at this point, since we already have a motion on the floor, I believe, from Councillor Thompson, that was seconded by, we didn't, I think I had a second for that. Councillor Macquarie, you seconded that, did you? Yep. report for that. Councilor McQuarrie, you seconded that, did you? Yep. Okay, so we, okay, so we can still go back and do a second reading. That's not a, that's not a problem. So we're going to set the meeting for May the eighth, twenty twenty four, at the McAdavis Place here, at six thirty PM, Wednesday, May eighth, at the McAdavis Community Center. Council McKay, you had a question?
Yep, if you don't mind.
Yep, absolutely.
I'm just a little confused. If we can't do a public hearing until the second reading is done, then how can we set a date for a public hearing before the second reading?
Okay, it's, we haven't had the meeting yet. So I guess we can go ahead and we can set it, but we don't have to, we don't have to have the meeting. We're not going to have the meeting yet.
Okay.
I'm just trying to follow, I'm just trying to follow the rules because we already had a, we already had a motion.
A motion on the floor?
Yeah.
Okay, I, I, okay, I'm just confused by that. Okay, thank you.
Of all councillors agree, a permanent motion, then we can go back to.
Yep. Okay, we can, we can do it that way. That's, okay. So, okay, councillor, is councillor Lee, right? And councillor McQuarrie? No, sorry, councillor Thompson, McQuarrie. Do you guys agree, would you two agree for that? Would we go back first? Yet to rescind the motion? Yeah, yeah. As long as you rescind it, that's not a problem. And councillor McQuarrie, you rescind yours? Okay. Then we'll go back and do a set for the second reading. So I need a motion on the floor. The council accept the second reading in its entirety of bylaw number EC dash twelve, the building bylaw. You can tell we didn't rehearse this tonight.
And as well, just with with bylaw EC one two in its entirety. So that will be made publicly. Copies are can be picked up at the municipal hall. And we'll also be putting the draft copy on the website for review as well.
Great, thank you. So I need a motion for a second reading. Deputy Mayor?
I move that council accept the second reading in its entirety of the bylaw EC twelve, building bylaw.
Great. And we need a second report for that. Council McQuarrie, question or comment on the motion? Council Dederakis, you're first.
We have an obligation, a responsibility to make it easier for people to build their homes, not to make it more expensive and more complicated.
Any other questions or comments on the motion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Contrary? Council Dederakis? The motion is carried. Motion is carried. Now, we'll go back to scheduled public hearing from Wednesday, May the eighth, twenty twenty four, at six thirty PM, here at McAdavis Place. I need a motion for that effect. Councillor Thompson and Councillor McQuarrie, you want to second that? Great. Question or comment on the motion for Wednesday, the May the eighth, twenty twenty four, at six thirty PM, here at McAdavis Place for a public hearing on objections to bylaw number EC dash twelve, the building bylaw. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Contrary? And contrary, Dederakis? Pardon me?
No.
I'm in favor.
You're in favor. Okay, great. Thank you. So that motion, that motion is carried. Okay, that brings us to ten D, surplus items. I'd be looking for a motion tonight that the council declare as surplus and advertise the tender of the following items, which is a large steel water tank at the Back Bay Fire Hall. Should, there might be lots of people looking for that tonight. So I need a motion for that to go to surplus tonight. Yeah, Councillor Thompson, great.
I move that council declare a surplus and advise the tender for the following items, a large steel water tank in Back Bay.
Great, excellent. We have a motion on the floor. We need a second report. Deputy Mayor? Question or comment? Councillor Thompson, would you like to describe the tank maybe a little bit and get people's, whet their appetite? Maybe it would be somebody out there that might be watching this tonight, might want a big tank in their backyard.
I know some history of this tank. This tank is a minimum of like thirty five to forty years old. If we pull water out of that to go to a fire, it will plug the hose coming out of the truck. There's no use for this. We have to have a fire hose that works. We don't need it plugged with sludge coming out of a forty year old tank. Thank you.
Yep. That was a very good job of selling it, but yeah. Didn't make a note of that. Councillor Thompson's no longer in charge of PR. Lucky we get a buck for that. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Any other questions or comments on that? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. That's passed unanimously. Policy number, this is ten E, policy number zero six dash twenty twenty four, the HR policies, policy supplement. I need a motion tonight. Yeah, we need a motion tonight to implement policy zero six dash twenty twenty four. And I'm going to go to Jason on this to to talk about it.
Thank you, worship. So this is policy, policy zero six dash twenty twenty four. It's a human resource policy supplement. So this is a policy internal for the employees of Eastern Charlotte. It's just an added, added supplement to the human resource policy zero one dash twenty twenty three. And this policy deals with overtime, additional time, lunch hours, designated work areas, just casual workers as well. And looking for council to adopt this.
Great. So I need a motion on the floor to approve and implement policy zero six dash twenty twenty four, the HR policy supplement. Need a motion for that. Councillor Lee?
I move that council approve and implement policy zero six dash twenty twenty four, HR policy supplement.
Great. Thank you, Councillor Lee. I need a second report for that. Councillor, our Deputy Mayor, sorry. Question or comment on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Contrary? And that's passed unanimously. Thank you. That brings us to correspondence tonight. We have one letter from the Fundy Middle and High School, and I'm going to call on Councillor Dederakis to read that out tonight.
Dear donor, once again, we are school, we see our school year ending. And with it comes another graduation for students at Fundy Middle and High School. It is because of the generous support of people like you in the community that our school graduations have been so successful. In these trying economical times, prizes, bursaries, and scholarships are more important than ever to go to our graduates. Whether you're a donor of many years, a new donor, or wish to become a donor, we thank you for your support and hope we can depend on your continued contribute, contribution. Hoping to hear from you soon, please send your contributions to Fundy Middle High School.
Thank you, Councillor Dederakis. Would you like to make a motion?
Sure. Okay, I will move that the letter from Fundy Middle High School be referred to the Finance Committee for review and recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor for this letter to be referred to the Finance Committee for review and recommendation. I need a second report for that. And Councillor McKay, thank you. Question or comment on that motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Contrary, that's passed unanimously. Next letter we have tonight is from Troy Morton. And I'm going to count on Councillor McKay tonight. She's been rehearsing this and practicing it all week to be able to read this out loud.
It's the first time I looked at it.
It's a great, it's a great letter, actually.
His worship, Mayor John D. Craig. I'd like this letter to be considered an informally formal request to our mayor and council in regards to the state or condition of the section of Carlton Street, which leads to the St. George Rural Cemetery. This section of road maintained by Eastern Charlotte has become absolutely disgraceful. Should we not be, not be delivering our loss to their final resting place on roads paved with gold rather than roads you can barely access with without four wheel drive? I understand that I'm being a bit overdramatic with my statement, but in all seriousness, this road has been a mess for quite some time. I believe it would be appreciated by all tax citizens if this small section of road could be replaced on the budgetary, be placed on the budgetary tables and expedite it into completion. I make this request with all due respect to both my mayor, as well as all members of council, and I appreciate your time and consideration into the address of this matter. Kindest regards, Troy Morton.
Thank you, Councillor McKay. I appreciate that. Would you like to make a motion, what to do with that letter tonight?
Yes. I move that the letter from Troy Morton be referred to the Public Works Committee for review and recommendation.
Great. Thank you, Councillor McKay. I need a second report for that. Councillor Thompson, thank you. Question or comment on that motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Contrary, and that's passed unanimously. That brings us folks to, this meeting is going along pretty quick. It's only seven thirty eight, so we're doing pretty good. This brings us to a public presentation appearances tonight. Please note, under bylaw EC dash zero one, section seven one, members of the public shall be entitled to address council for five minutes with with no debate from council on matters of municipal jurisdiction. So this is not, it's not a question and answer time. This is, I'm just reading this as part of the rules and regulations that we, that I have to go by. And so this is gives you the opportunity to speak. So I'll give you, for the public, great, excellent. Yeah. Yeah. All I, all I need from every, anybody that goes up to the mic is just your name and civic address. And then you have.
I have a letter to suggest to you, Mr. Mayor as well. So I just thought I'd leave that, but I'll read it in person tonight. Dear Mr. Mayor, so Shane Borthwick, live in Brettlebane. So, dear Mr. Mayor, I'm writing to you as a lifelong resident of St. George. My wife and I returned to the area after finishing university to raise our family and establish our careers. She's a teacher at the local elementary school, and I am an investment advisor. We operate the nineteen twelve Inn located in Brettlebane, just outside St. George, and Impact Wealth, a financial services firm that recently opened an office in St. Andrews. We welcome people near and far who marvel at the natural beauty and possibilities that our part of the world offers. Our daughters are now in high school and are talking of going to university and returning to the place they love to establish their lives. Our family has had the privilege of travel, and while we enjoy visiting new places and cultures, we always look forward to returning home. We love this place, but we've always believed it can be so much more. Our travels with school sports often ends up in a small community with a thriving business community, new community civic center, wellness center, new housing developments, EV charging, and an early childhood learning center. As we make the return home, the question always comes from the backseat. Why do other communities have so much more than what we do? Why can't we have these things? This lack of infrastructure was on full display during the pandemic, when other sports teams were able to practice in community gyms when the schools were closed, placing our local teams at a clear disadvantage to their peers and further contributing to the mental health and addictions crisis that remains today. For the, for the past twenty years, we have talked of growing the pie, the need to encourage population growth, grow our local business community, and grow our tax base. We talk in backyards, on social media, and in local restaurants. We talk, but we never seem to outline a shared vision for the future and get the right people behind it. Enter municipal reform in twenty twenty two, a new opportunity to capitalize on bringing the greater community together to unify Eastern Charlotte, an opportunity to chart a new course to address in our own way the many crises of our time, including mental health, addictions, affordable housing, poverty, food insecurity, healthcare, immigration, economic opportunities for all, and the climate crisis, to name a few. Many other communities have a vision, a plan, and are making it happen. It can be done, just not here, it seems. They are working with residents, young and old, those that have been here for generations and newcomers. They are working with all levels of government and local employers, large and small. They're working toward a shared vision to attract and retain talent, including healthcare and other wellness professionals, and often residents that, and offer residents the services they need to not only improve their lives, but address many of the social and environmental crises of our time. So how are we doing in Eastern Charlotte? Worse than I thought, it appears. I'm not alone when I say I was shocked to open our recent property tax bills this year, discovering a jump of over twenty five percent, and to learn that the bulk of the increase was because local government, government's unfair tax policy. I could not understand how local elected officials could publicly state how dire our economic situation was, quote, that council had no choice but to increase rates, unquote, while at the same time giving themselves a healthy decrease, nearly seven percent, leaving a discrepancy on municipal rates of over twenty one percent between our communities. This is not the kind of leadership anyone voted for. The role of any government is to protect and promote the health and welfare of its citizens, not fan the flames of division in our community that contributes to a lack of trust in elected officials at all levels of government. Our community is so much better than this, it makes a mockery of the slogan, "A community strong." In my view, this additional hardship placed on local families is akin to kicking them while they're down with today's economic pressures from the recent pandemic and subsequent inflationary pressures. While the cost of everything has increased, no one deserves a twenty five percent hike in the property tax bill. It is wrong. A tax policy like this forces families out of our community, deters, deters people looking to move to the area, and makes those who recently relocated question their decision. We can and must do better than this. Taxpayers deserve answers to three simple questions. Number one, does council believe that a twenty five percent increase in property tax is fair and reasonable? Number two, what went wrong to create this tax discrepancy of over twenty one percent between communities? Number three, what is council going to do to fix this mess and implement a stable, fair, and equitable tax policy that can support a shared vision for growth? As mayor, you need residents of Eastern Charlotte to get involved, to work with you and council to ensure their voices are heard, their vision is clear, and the right people are behind that vision to make it a reality. One of my favorite quotes is, "Never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens can change the world, indeed is the only thing that ever has," Margaret Mead. I look forward to your thoughtful response to address this important issue before taxes are due the end of May. I would also ask that your government plan to truly engage residents to define a vision for the future of Eastern Charlotte that we can all work together to make a reality, a shared vision that our children and our grandchildren can be proud of. Respectfully.
Great. Thank you very much, Shane. Actually, you must have rehearsed that because you're just like a ten seconds over. So you did, you did good. Right. I thank you, thank you very much for that. And next.
Mine won't be as long. Stephen French. Thanks for having me.
Civic addresses, Steve?
What's that?
I just need your civic address.
Yep, seventy nine Osprey Lane.
Great, thank you.
So what we would like to see, I know this is not going to be a back and forth today, but could we get one of those old fashioned town hall meetings where we can ask questions respectfully and kind of get some answers? I have a lot of unanswered questions with regards to why we're blaming, you know, the community funding equalization grant for most of this increase, when in fact, we all know that that's a small part of this increase. You got a seven hundred and ten thousand dollar budget increase. You've got a twenty, two hundred and thirty seven thousand dollar decrease from the rates reduced in St. George and Black's Harbor, nine hundred and forty seven thousand dollars. And that's the bulk of where this other increases. We've got rates that are here and here, and they're still there. I'd like to know, I know there's been some concessions, but it's still not equalized on the services to the minister. So, and where we're going with this? I'd like to kind of know what what's happening. I know on February twentieth, Jason, you were, you received a phone call on the discrepancies in the rates. I would like to know at that time, which was about two months ago, what did you do then when you knew this was going to be a big problem? Because it festered, and here we are today with some of this stuff. And were the councillors made aware of this stuff? I don't know. These are the questions I'd like to answer. I'm really concerned about the messaging, the transparency of what we're seeing and hearing in terms of, you know, the whys. Things are happening. So I think we need to get some answers on those types of, types of things. So, and again, I know you're not going to answer questions tonight, but if we could get a meeting where we could kind of engage in dialogue and kind of ask some of these tough questions, because I think there needs to be a lot more transparency in what's going on. There's some stuff in the budget I'd like to go through, things I hear. You know, I, I don't know. And that's what I'd like to know. All right?
Good. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Good evening, everyone. I'll just be short. I had no intention of speaking.
I just need, I just need your name and your civic address. I know who you are, but.
Patty Borthwick in Fleet Lane Utopia.
Great, thank you, Patty.
And I wasn't going to say a word until John mentioned what was going on in the community. So in case you forgot, which I know you didn't, you come every year, we're having the annual food drive for Hillary's Hope for Hunger on Saturday, April twenty seventh, right on Main Street, between eleven and two. And over the last three years, with everybody's help, we've raised over a hundred thousand dollars in this little area for the food bank between money and food donations. So I just wanted to remind, in case you wanted to bring up that list again, Mayor Craig.
Great, thank you.
And you can add that to it. And that's all I wanted to say.
I appreciate it.
Have a good night.
That's a great, that's a great project, and I know the 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 food bank needs as much help. I know this year, they they really under a lot of pressure this year, and and I really noticed that, you know, when I really noticed it the most was when the the power went out there at Christmas time, and that's where a lot of hardships I noticed in my area that affected a lot of younger people, because they're buying a lot of gasoline for for generators and stuff like that. So I was making a few phone calls to help help people out, and the food bank was there. Every time I called, the food bank was there to help people. I couldn't believe it, and this is the first time I actually had any interaction with the food bank. And I tell you, they they really came forward and really helped out a lot of people during that time. And I know they do it all the time, but it was something that I actually saw for the first time. So it is something that is well needed in this area, so. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, and I'll see you on the 27th.
Absolutely, definitely. Anybody else? Yep, come right up front, don't. Just take your time, I'm no hurry. We're actually way ahead of schedule tonight. We're way ahead of schedule, so take your time, take your time. The game doesn't, the game doesn't start at 8:30, so wait lots of time. I'm just kidding, my team's out.
Nice to see you, Mayor and councillors up there. You're all pretty good, to tell you the truth. Let's start off with, especially this guy. My name is Lester McKay. I live in Penfield all my life. I have a real problem with this land use people. My grandfather bought a piece of land in 1902, and it was passed to my father, passed to me, and I'm passing it to my daughter, three daughters. When she first came here, she bought a mini home, and it was supposed to be delivered on a certain day. I undertook to run a cement foundation for the thing, or cement slab, I should say, that, and a grudge. And contractor had the forms all laid, and somebody come along and said, "Did you call the building inspector?" And I said, "Well, why would I call the building inspector? It's not a building, it's a piece of slab, cement." Well, anyway, out of courtesy, I called him, and the words that come out of that man's mouth, I felt like punching him in the head if we seen him, and it was, "Don't you run one bit of cement? Don't you do one thing on that piece of property, or you'll be, cost you a lot of money, because you're not allowed to build until we say so, on your own property." So anyway, the contractors had to take up their cement thing, because they had to use them. And it went on for 15 days. He held up in the very best of weather last fall. Anyway, when the time came, he said, "You can go to St. Stephen, get a building permit." So I drove to St. Stephen, got the building permit. While I was there, I was talking to the receptionist, and I said, "This land has been in my family for 122, 3 years, I guess." And I saved it for my three daughters. When I sold my blueberry, my blueberry business, I kept that homestead land for my daughters to build the house on. Anyway, I just got home, started to work a little bit, and a phone rang, and this lady come on and says, "Mr. McKay." I said, "Yep." "You will have to sign all that five acres of land over before you put that home on there, or you'll never have your power hooked up." That really pissed me off. So anyway, we kept on going. I had to go to St. Stephen and sign another document about this, saying, write a letter that there'd only be one home built on that property. Anyway, to make the long story short, the home is there now, and the home, when it came on that certain date, is sitting on the ground. It's not sitting on a cement slab anymore, because they couldn't run it, the weather got so bad, we couldn't run it down. And this spring, the frost unthawed, the home going up and down like a yoyo. And it's a damn shame that this happened. So I want to make it clear that if that man ever comes on my property again, his name is Vaughn Faulkner, if he comes on my land again, I'm going to hurt him, and hurt him bad. I want that to be known. I guess that was about all on that one. And oh, yeah, going back here, Wayne and I, we sit on a lot of meetings with other councillors or members. And about this hub thing, I know you're all in the McAdavy Center here. How come it's called the hub of the Oatland areas when every area in our meetings didn't want a thing to do with the town of St. George? Nothing. And here we are, now controlled by the town. How come? Can anybody answer that?
No.
What's that? Yeah, how come, how come it all ended up in town of St. George, and all the Oatland areas didn't want a thing to do with this whole council thing? I thought it was the the central part was supposed to be picked in the Penfield area for the fire hall and mayor's office and the ambulance base. I like little strange answers, that's all.
That's definitely something that can be thinkable, thought about in the future, Lester. I'm definitely.
What's that?
That's definitely something that can be looked at in the future, absolutely. There's no, there's nothing set in stone to say that the center of the municipal, like, for example, the municipal building has to be in St. George.
It has to be, you say?
It doesn't, it does not have to be in St. George. There's no rule regulation saying that, that whatever. I guess at this point, we don't have the money to to build a new one at this point.
Oh, I understand that, sure.
And we did renovate the building that we do have here in St. George for the municipal building, but that, thanks to the problems in the country, they were able to to help pay pay for those renovations. But as far as a new building, no, the future councils were probably looking at probably building a new municipal building at some point, and and probably a brand-new fire hall, because a brand-new fire hall has, should be more centralized than where it is right now, so. And that doesn't mean we're going to be closing down any fire halls, but there should be one central, large fire station somewhere, whether it's Penfield or somewhere close to that, I don't know yet. That's up to the the future, that whatever councils make that decision. But a piece of property would have to be bought before we do that. And but but to make, give you a short answer, there is no specific rule saying that the municipal office has to be in St. George, no. That'd be up to the future councils to make that decision.
Okay, John, thank you.
Thank you very much for coming in tonight, I appreciate it. And hopefully, hopefully, we'll hopefully we'll see you in the next parade. Anybody else like to come forward?
Hi, I'm Andy Mason. I live on South Street, if that's enough. I'm a senior at Fundy Millan High School, and I just want to talk about how, you know how our students have been affected by the pandemic? I was in eighth grade when COVID hit, had my eighth grade year cut short. In ninth grade, and I was going day on, day off from academically, and it's still affecting me day to day, even as I take 12th grade courses. Something Fundy Millan High School is doing to try to improve the effects of this pandemic and on students' mental wellness in general is planning a mental health week in the month of May. So I'm just going to read this letter that we wrote. We're trying to fundraise $6,287 to try to cover some of the programs that we're doing, to try to improve morale at our school. So I'm just going to read that. "As we transition to post-pandemic times, we notice a decline in school culture and student and community connectivity at FMHS. Our student population is as differentiated as they've ever been academically, socially, and culturally. We need to provide engaging and positive and safe, healthy learning, working environments for our youth and staff. As we aim to improve relationships, accessibility, and a sense of belonging to a welcoming community at FMHS. To create a school community that recognizes and understands mental wellness by offering an engaging, positive, safe, and healthy learning and working environment for our youth and staff based on research and professional development with strong ties to the community. Middle-level mids in motion and high school student representative council are once again going to organize a mental health month in the month of May. Our goal is to work together as an entire school to raise awareness for mental health and to educate our student population on the importance of checking in on each other. We are reaching out to you and your organization to see if you'd be interested in donating to our events this year. Our plan for the month of May for Mental Health Week is as follows. Every week, we hope to organize a whole school event or activity to just raise awareness about student mental health. Could be something as simple as posting positive notes around our school to try to encourage morale. Include mental health facts and tips in our daily announcements. Invite Pete's Dairy Bar for our Ice Cream Sunday yearly party. And we are going to end the month with a field day for all students at FMHS. And in order for us to pull off the event, we will need to fundraise a total of $6,782.70. We would like to end the month with a day where all students can have fun and relax, a day where they don't have to worry about having enough money to incur, to participate in these events, as we'd like to provide it for free. A day where they can be a kid again. As most of us know, social and emotional learning and being active help with morale and student participation in school events. Field Day is designed to give everyone an opportunity for enjoyment, try new things, be active, and to be with a classmate and have fun. For high school, this would be a great opportunity for them to recharge before they head into exams and graduation. If you have any monetary donations, you can contact the school or Rachel Sullivan. I just wanted to make this well aware to the town and any communities in St. George who are willing to donate. This is my last year at Fundy. As student co-president, I just really wanted to make everybody well aware.
Thank you, thank you very much, you did a great job. It's not, it's not easy to get up and to a microphone and being on TV at the same time, so you did an excellent job, I appreciate it. Anybody else like to come forward? While I'm waiting for somebody to come forward, I'd just like to take a moment to just read this out loud. I had this handed to me right before the, right before the meeting, but it's a good segue from what we just heard. This is to Kara in Eastern Charlotte. "We greatly appreciate the opportunity of taking the admission for public skating this year. This year, we raised $2,063.91. That is enough to almost purchase a smart board, and our goal, which was our goal this year. We are projected to purchase all nine smart boards, and this would not be possible without your kindness and generosity. Thank you from the Blacks Harbor School, staff, and students." So I just want to pass that along to that, that thank you. Anybody else? Thank you. No, I said, I gave you, I gave you a moment to. Sam. Told me, told me not to call him councillor tonight, so I don't know. Great to have you here tonight.
St. George, just a couple of things. In November, the council invited the public to the budget process. In that process, four people showed up, four, out of 7,300. And now you're saying, "How come this happened?" Well, it's pretty clear. You know, it's, we went through the process. The Eastern Charlotte rate was divided by council, and through the six LSDs, it goes from 36 cents to 41 and a half cents. That's the EC rate, that's the rate they set for the services they're providing. The provincial services was 27 cents. They use a 30 for their estimate, because it was a little bit off the mark, it was 27 cents. The provincial rate now is 25 cents for some, as high as 30 cents and 16 cents for one. Now, the one that's 16 cents, quite clearly to me is a mistake. There's something wrong with that number, that shouldn't have changed that much. For these three LSDs, the fire services were taken over by Eastern Charlotte. That included their buildings, their operational, their maintenance, and whatever else is required. Fire service is one of them, insurance for man, trucks, equipment, everything. In two of those LSDs, former LSDs, the rate dropped about a penny to one and a quarter. The other one, it dropped 11 cents. The same thing happened, I don't understand, I think that's a clerical error. I suspect that that will be rectified. I don't think this year, because the tax rates have already been established, and you know, the taxpayers have already gone out. The road services and infrastructure was 41.15. That's been that way for a lot of years. That's the number you want to be concerned with, because I expect that to balloon up sometime if that hands it over to the public. You know, the the rate is from 97 cents to a dollar 11. That's a little off the mark, but that 97 cent one is referred to that LSD where that rate dropped. It was estimated to be a dollar 12, or a dollar 11 thereabouts. Now, when the transition was taking place and the wards were mapped out, a lot of people had questions. Why do the wards go in certain areas, and why did they stop at certain places? That said, I'm looking at one right here now, where the Eastern Charlotte tax rate went up, the provincial rate went up, the tax rate went down. It leads me to believe, because that ward has expanded, the taxation rate actually went up, the value. The revenue went up, so the tax rate probably went down. There's also another one here that that infringed on, and their rate went up. Not necessarily a lot on the provincial side, but on the other one, it did. Services provided by Eastern Charlotte, it varies. You know, it's the Regional Service Commission, that's a big one. Fire protection, that's another one. That one up a couple hundred thousand dollars. Parks and Recreation includes probably Canal Beach, Patrick Connor Arena, this recreation building here, Penfield Park, and what have you. There could be others, I'm not quite sure. Garbage collection, that's one that went way up in one LSD, it tripled, actually. And it was a small LSD, it went up a lot. And it's inflects that on EC rate, because that one went up 7 cents in that area, and that's probably one of the main reasons for that, that one. Administration Services, the building in St. George is cost shared to a certain percentage, along with staff. You know, some may tell you what you want to hear, that it's going to balance out, and it may. It might not have happened in this first year. I don't see how they could actually move at all the transition in the first year. Almost impossible, I would think. Remember, the first taxation was set up by the province. The second one was done by this council to the best that they could do. And I mean, that's not actually too bad, 36 cents to 41 cents, the variation between the wards is not a lot. Yes, my tax rate went down in St. George. Yes, it went down in Blacks Harbor. It's designed to do that through amalgamation, that's the purpose. You haven't been following it, obviously, I'm not even engaged to it.
Do you want me to read the regular board?
Just a minute.
No, no. Please let, let Sam finish.
So, you know, it's gone on a long time. The government voted to have it, we're here. Is it going to balance out? I know my tax rate's going to go up, no question about it. I know it's going to go up. Are the other LSDs going to stabilize? They may. This one here, where that went from 27 to 16 cents, that's a bit concerning. That's a lot, actually, on the provincial side, because all the services the province provides should be the same in every LSD, or former LSD, sorry.
Okay, I'm going to, I have to give you one more minute. Sorry.
Oh, no, that's, that's fine. You know, for example, the cost sharing is why it was done. I don't say I agree with it. And I could certainly say that St. George isn't ruling it, I can tell you that without any hesitation. There's two councillors on here from St. George, the rest of them are all from LSDs. They make the decisions. They overrule the decisions. If it's an unanimous decision, so be it. For example, this building is going to have a generator put in for it, you know, going to be put in here. This council voted to take the St. George taxpayers' money to do it. I don't like it, but it needs to be done. It's here for people to use. Unfortunately, this building is the only meeting place in Eastern Charlotte at this time. It is what it is, our municipal building, that's, that's the only one we had. You can't wander around places to have meetings. It'd be nice, and we need the public to be engaged. You should have been engaged before now.
Thank you very much, Sam, I have to stick to the rules tonight, and your time is expired. But I appreciate you coming tonight, you did a good job. Okay, anybody else? Going once. Yeah, go right ahead, yeah, please do, yeah. Please do. Just, all I need is just a name and civic address, and you've got five minutes. Thank you very much.
Yes, Nicholas McMullin, live in Brettle Bay. Really, in response to the last gentleman's remarks, I just really don't think, think how was that fair that my tax bill went up 25%? I just, I understand his numbers, and I understand the numbers that are involved, but I, I just can't agree with that, and I really, I simply have the three questions is, you know, how did we get there? I don't really understand, because when I got my tax bill, I didn't get no explanation of the 25% increase. And I'm not a numbers guy, so I got, there's no real explanation. And I'm not a numbers guy, so I got, there's no real explanation there to explain it all. So, and so I just want to know how it happened and what we can do to fix it. Because there's got to be a point where you guys would agree that maybe that's not fair. And I make mistakes every day, and I feel as though there was a mistake made here, which is all right. And I think we just need to fix it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming today. I appreciate it. Chris, you're doing a good job on the camera tonight. I don't know if you heard me or not. I don't think you did. Anybody else? That's a long walk from there back.
I had no intentions of getting up and talking today. You know, I'm sitting here listening, and, you know, we have a community divided. And, you know, I hear a lot of talk about wards and my ward, and, you know, this person's tax rate and that person's tax rate. And I mean, we have to become one community. You know, I think we really have to start to really consider if this is even what the makeup of the council should be. You know, the ward system was supposed to give equal representation. You know, everybody knows that the ward system, there's a risk of biased representation. But with everything that's going on, somehow we have to become one community. And the whole municipal reform wasn't about anybody's taxes going up or down. It was about fair taxation. And really, you know, I don't think anybody would question that Black Harbor's tax rate probably should go down a little. You know, it should. But when an LSD with nothing is paying 87% of a town with pretty much everything we have in the area, that's getting a little out of, you know, that's getting a little off. And there's lots of reasons why, but, you know, enough talk about the tax rate. Somehow, you know, this community's got to come together, and everybody knows I like numbers, and I'll say a few. So, a baseball team I played with in 1981, anyway, I look back and say, "Okay, how did we have that team in 1981?" And so I went back and I looked back at numbers. Well, in 1981, Charlotte County had 26,000 people, and the province had 696,000. And the median age in Charlotte County was 28. So 50% of the people were under 28, and 50% were over. You know, and at that period of time, we had three or four ball leagues in St. Stephen. We had a prosperous, you know, schools were growing. You know, and since 1981, you know, we've had Penfield School close, lost the liquor store. That really hurt me, but, you know, we can go on and on about what we've lost. But in 2001 census, do you know how many people we had in Charlotte County? 26,000. And the province had 813,000. And we went from four members of the provincial legislature to two. Actually, we got like one and three-quarter. So our influence isn't really very much anymore, and we're becoming less and less significant. And the median age in 2021 was 48. So we went from having, you know, 50% of our population under 28 to 50% of our population under 48. And, you know, my kids, you know, one's in Toronto, one's in Halifax, they're probably not coming back. But, you know, if we don't do something to come together as a community and start to grow, well, we will continue to die.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Just need your name and civic address.
Hi, I'm Ashley. I'm in Penfield. I didn't plan on speaking tonight, but I'm going to change the topic a little bit. I was here in November and talked to council. I'm sure you guys remember. We actually had the YMCA here, and we were talking about a childcare facility. So we fully recognize that there's a ton of issues in this area, and I'm sure we're working at all of them. But there has not been an update, a public update, since then. I look at the meeting notes that was posted on November 17th. My correspondence, which was filmed, is not noted properly. So when we talk about what's important and what's on the forefront and what we're working towards, I really think it's important, because I said this the last time, people just want to know. And a lot of the conversations tonight is, most of it is, they're unaware of the reason that these decisions are being made. And that communication is broken. I feel like as a community member, I feel like council can do a better job at communicating decisions and the reason that those decisions are being made, so that everybody here has a better understanding. And I think that that would also help, you know, support the vision of where you're trying to go, which I don't feel is very clear as well. But for today, I guess what I would ask is, I would like a public update, and I would like to see it on the agenda. I would like to see where we are at with that, because, you know, private door meetings are fantastic. I'm sure that there's being work done, but it's not public knowledge to know that anything's been taken action since the last time I was here. Thanks.
Great. Thank you very much. Anybody else? I think I know you.
Erin Kernigan from St. George. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight either, but I've heard a lot of things said tonight. And it's easy for us to sit back and criticize all these people. They give up their time. They were elected. I wouldn't want their job. I don't know why anyone of these would want that job. But we talk about our town growing, and the only way it's going to grow is if we're all here, every council meeting, and listening to what's being said. Sam said there was four people here in November, and I wasn't one of them. I don't tend very often, and I should be ashamed of myself. But if we want our town to grow, it takes all of us as a community to help these people, come to the meetings, make suggestions, and follow up with them. You know?
You want to keep that driver, Mike?
That's right. Yeah, we've all got things going on, but, you know, with, how many people do we say we have in the community here in Eastern Charlotte? I'm not sure of the number. But these seats could be filled for our meetings. That's all I have to say is, I don't know what's happened, but I'm just saying, we need to participate and not come down on these people. Come to the meetings and follow through with them.
Great. Thank you very much. Council, appreciate that.
Raymond Hall, 108 Mount Pleasant Road. I wasn't going to speak, and I was warned not to speak, and my wife.
Raymond, I just want to say, I want to thank you for what you do on the PrAC. You're one of our local members that sits on that committee, and I want to thank you before you go ahead and speak.
Thank you.
I'll make sure you get your full five minutes.
No, it's a pleasure to do it. I like it.
No, you do a good job.
It's good for the community.
That's one of those jobs that I'm thankful as well, too, so I want to thank you for doing that.
Thank you. My problem is, as she this day, I was one of the four people here at that meeting. The former mayor, acting mayor's here, other council members. I might have missed 10 meetings in the last seven years. I see three or four people here consistently, but I hear on social media, everybody is bashing the council. Like she said, I would not want to be in any one of your seats. I tried one time. Glad I didn't get it. Everybody's going to, I've been on Facebook myself, and I've said it time and time again, we have to become one community. We've got to stop being divided. We've got to stop worrying about what everyone else is doing and where they're doing it. Work together. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. Appreciate it. I'm not sure if people are getting up the lever or just going to the microphone. Go ahead, Faith.
Faith Avery, Carlton Street, St. George. I just wanted to step up on a couple of reasons. One is Raymond's absolutely right. I sat in those seats, in multiple seats. It is hard in those seats, making decisions for everybody. So if a mistake happens, it gets fixed. And this is how the mistakes come out, and hopefully they get fixed. I want to thank Alexa for my mom calling her, looking for a light on our street because she's scared somebody's going to get hit. It's dark. Alexa was on top of that, called Jason. My mom, God bless her, she's 84 years old, and she told me, "Alexa's much more useful than I was on council." So, thank you, Alexa. Eastern Charlotte Community Kitchen is doing fantastic. We're growing every week. Thank you guys for all your support. Thank you, Mayor, for coming and attending. We appreciate when council can come and sit with some people and talk. We are here every Monday night at 5:00 till 6:00 for a free community meal. Everybody's welcome. Please come. It's not only for the food, but it's also to feed your soul and have conversation. So please come. I would also like to mention today, I had somebody come into my office on Main Street and say about signage, that we used to have signage around town for the places of interest. They were beautiful signs. They were wrought iron, and for whatever reason, snowplows, transport trucks, whatever, they got taken down. We should really think about getting something up for directional signs for the Falls and Gorge, for the Eagle's Nest, for the Upper Bridge, for the walking trails, because we are getting a lot of people coming to our town, and if they have to stop and ask, it's bad on us. We should be making them aware of where to go. And on my last note is Troy Morton's letter. I agree 100%. When I was on council, we had that on the table, but it's got shuffled around over the years, but we really should make that happen, because that is a deplorable street. But thank you, guys. It's been a hard night, but you guys are doing okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Faith. And again, thank you for the community meals. That has done very well this year, and I can't thank you guys enough for what you do for the communities. So thank you. Anybody else? I'll just take my time. Sometimes people have to think about... Going once, twice, three times. That brings us to statements by members of council tonight. I'm going to go to Council McQuarrie first, to my very far right. Council Lee, you're second.
Yeah, I have a few things to say. The first one is, thank you. Thank you so much, everybody, for coming tonight. I listened to every word, and there was a lot of good material here to listen to. I made some notes. And again, this is how we learn. You know, when you're up at that mic, that's not easy. I realize that. And for Andrea's daughter there, I kind of forget her name. She did a great job. I know that was a little tough for her. You need to get a letter into us, and we'll certainly consider that for sure. But I really appreciated all the comments, and I know all the rest of the people here did, too. I, this, you know, St. George LD down in Brettleveine is my ward, and this has been a real trying time for me, and I'm going to take some ownership in what happened. There were some mistakes made. They were both on the provincial level and on the municipal level. We've got to look at both sides of that. There never was any hidden agenda to, you know, help our friends and put the burden on other people. We didn't do that. That was not, that was not anybody's intent in this council. There's nobody here that would do that. To have that, you know, said about us is pretty mean, I think. So, having said that, there were some mistakes made, and they are being corrected. There will be new power bills going out, as far as I know, that I don't know how long that's going to be, but it shouldn't be too long. I know they need to get that done right away. For me personally, my ownership in this, and I want to apologize for it, is not catching this early in the year, January, February. Had I have done my job and took a look at this in those months and seen all the inconsistencies, because those rates would have all been done by February, it could have brought that to the attention of whoever and got it sorted out then, and we might have avoided all this tonight. I get it. Tax bills are high. It was really unfair in St. George LD, because there was too much consistency down. There was a mistake there, and that's being fixed. As far as the tax bills being taken away, they won't be. We're going to have taxes. Everybody in the province is paying high taxes. I don't know, maybe somebody can help me with this. I know Stephen's good with all these numbers and stuff. At one time, I think the province of New Brunswick was paying the highest taxes of any province and/or state in North America at one time, years ago. I don't know about now, but I'll bet we're up within the top three. I'll bet we still are in the top three. It's hard times for everybody. We're, most of us here are new on council. This is our first kick at the can. I've never done a municipal budget before, and I'll be the first one to tell you, I don't understand a lot of it. I'd be really open to a meeting to discuss it again, ensure questions, a Q and A session on this would be great. I'd learn from it. I'm sure I would. You know, all I can tell you is, from my point of view, you know, come next January, February, I'm going to be taking a good, hard look at all the things that, between the province and the municipality, that we've put together to make sure they're where they're supposed to be. This mistake could have been avoided, I think. Anyway, I could go on all night about this.
Okay, I got to go to Council, I'm going to go to Council McKay. Not that McKay, this McKay right here.
Could do that. No, that's right, we could do that.
Council Lee, did you have anything else to speak on?
I guess I'm done.
You guess? I wasn't trying to catch you off.
No, I'm done.
I just have to make sure you have said everything you wanted to say. Council McKay, you're next.
Okay, first of all, thank you all for coming. Thank you all for the people that got up and spoke. I want to encourage people to get a copy of the building bylaw and read it thoroughly, and then come to the meeting and voice your town, or the municipal office in St. George. So anyway, yeah, come and voice your concerns, opinions, whatever, on the bylaw. Secondly, the whole thing tonight that everybody was, everybody was talking about on the tax, on the tax bills. First, I have to say, I found it very disconcerting that people would accuse members of this council of doing the tax rates to benefit the people that lived in the town of St. George or the previous town of St. George. I thought maybe everybody knew everybody on this council and would know that nobody would do that, and why somebody would think that we intentionally looked at St. George LSD and put their tax rate up, just them. It doesn't make sense that we, as a council, would do that. I mean, we would not specifically pick out one LSD and say, "Okay, we're going to up that rate to make these people pay so much more." That's just not, that's just not the way it was. And you will find, like Terry said, there was a mistake made. I think Jason was talking to somebody within the provincial government, and there was a mistake made, and it will be corrected. I'm sorry for everything that you guys have gone through with all of this, but I can guarantee you, say what you want to say about me, but these councillors sitting at this table, they have the utmost of integrity, and I will defend them to the death if I had to, because I know them and I know what they stand for, and nobody is out to try to do harm to somebody else. So thank you very much for your time and your attention.
Thank you, Council McKay. I'm going to go to the deputy, I'm going to go to the deputy mayor next.
To echo Terry's sentiment, I guess I'd like to...
To Akko Terry's sentiment, I guess I'd like to thank everybody. It's nice to see so many people out. And like everybody's been saying so far, we didn't, there was no intent, no malice. A mistake was made. We'll own that, I guess, and hope for better things next year.
Council Thompson, our water salesman here. Nothing. Council Dederakis, thank you.
Yeah, I don't have anything prepared. I've just notes all over the place. I've heard over and over again about this, this topic of transparency, and we, like, transparency is a fact, like, we have to do it. It's by law, right? In regards to the budget that we passed in December, you know, I talked about it at our October meeting, about having a public working session, so people in the public, regardless of where you live in Eastern Charlotte, can hear what exactly are the costs incurred. And I talked about it again in November. I made a motion, actually, for November twenty-eighth for a working session. And just like Raymond had mentioned, only five people showed up. Three of them came from St. George. One came from Back Bay. The fifth one was my partner, because at the time I was nine months pregnant, so he was in standby mode. But like Ms. Kernigan said as well, participation is important, too, right? But we're not, absolutely, we're not hiding anything. Yeah, so that's one thing. The second thing is, you know, this amalgamation has been challenging, right? There's no question about that. Like, you know, I wouldn't say that, I know some people feel like, as a community, we're divided. I don't feel that way. I just feel that, you know, it's hard to change, right? I know someone said, like, you know, they pushed, like, St. George's tax rate has gone down. Yes, you know, it did, our tax rate did go down. It's still the highest. When it comes to cost sharing, for example, we still pay the highest portion. We pay twenty-five percent of cost sharing of six wards. Yeah, there's a lot of things I need to share, and I mean, what else could I say? You know, there were some things that St. George had to do, like, just the Ward Three had to do that, you know, that I didn't necessarily agree with. So, for example, you know, it was voted that, that just the former town of St. George pay for two generators, a hundred thousand dollars worth of generators, emergency generators, for this building and for, and for the municipal hall. Of course, those can rotate in different places, but, you know, that was just a cost that just the Ward Three did, right? Or the former town of St. George. When it comes to transportation, because someone mentioned transportation, only, only the former town of St. George and the village of Black Harbor, former village, invested money into transportation. We have a partnership with ECW. We put in, at least for, I don't know what the situation was for the village of Black Harbor, but as Eastern Charlotte, just the repairs of St. George paid about, I think about fifteen, earmarked fifteen thousand dollars for an EV charger, and hopefully we'll also have an electric vehicle to aid with transportation as well. Another example is, in the mall over here, there is a, there's a health center, right? This is a health center that's used by every single, like, most people in Eastern Charlotte, right? And just the former town of St. George pays for that cost. That's twenty thousand dollars. So, yeah, going forward, you know, we have to look at equalizing things, right? We have to look at, you know, everyone contributing their fair share. I totally agree with that, right? But I'm concerned about some things, right? So if, like, money's a very tangible thing, like, we, you know, if you don't have money, you don't have money, right? That's something we can see. And I'm concerned that if, you know, if, if the LSDs, because most of the people that spoke tonight are from the LSDs, right? If LSDs are having challenges paying their share of services that they currently use, right? And if they're also having challenges paying for their share of the services that are mandated by the province, which is almost a million dollars, right? Then I'm concerned about future projects that are supposed to be beneficial to the whole of the community, like childcare, like a civic center, right? So those are some conversations that we have to have moving forward. Yeah, thanks for coming tonight. That's it.
Thank you. I just want to correct, just want to correct, you said St. George had the highest tax rate. Black Harbor actually has the highest tax rate. Exactly. That's the only thing I want to correct. Black Harbor pays the highest taxes here in the area. At this point, the number fourteen is the date and location of the next regular meeting of council. Just want to remind everybody what that is, because we'd like, I would like to have everybody back for the next meeting. And the next meeting is May the fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, seven p.m., right here at the McDavid Place. Again, that's May fifteenth, again, at seven, seven p.m., the McDavid Place. That's when the next meeting is. At this point, I need a motion for adjournment. Council McKay, thank you very much, and thank you everybody for coming tonight. Thank you.